To order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 24, 2018 County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Craig is in the front here at the desk and he can help you with that. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
For approval?
A motion and a second.
Second.
Same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission meeting minutes from July 17, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item three is bills to be paid in the amount of $458,078.99.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion of second, any comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is a human services medical expenditure report and that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is the personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatement recommendations for approval and there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests and there are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPO number 44308 in the amount of $6,900. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Before you is DPO 44308 in the amount of $6,900. The lien represents public defender and court-appointed attorney fees for juvenile delinquency reported on 2014, 2016, and 2017. It also represents public defender fees in the amount of $5,400 for the petitioner's ex-spouse. The petitioner is in the process of purchasing a home and is expected to close on August 9. She was aware that her son had received legal representation but does not believe she should be responsible for the legal fees for her ex-spouse incurred because they had been divorced since February 2016. The petitioner is requesting that her name be removed from the joint lien with payment of $750, 50 percent of the lien amount for the juvenile legal representation, leaving the remainder of the lien in the name of the ex-spouse.
Questions for Melinda? This is opportunity, is the petitioner here, Melinda? Did you want to speak? You don't have to give your name, you don't have to stand up and just talk really loud.
Okay. Like she said, half, I feel like I'm half responsible for my minor son's charges, which is $750. The other half is his father's father and then my ex-spouse's father's charges of $5,400. And I'm going to report that.
Any questions for the petitioner?
I would make a motion to settle for the $750 plus put the remaining $750 and the $5,400 on the ex-spouse.
I'll second that motion.
Motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We're done. Item number B is DPO number 79424 in the amount of $874.40.
This DPO represents public defender fees for juvenile delinquency recorded on September of 2012. The petitioner is in the process of purchasing a home and is expected to close on August 13. He was unaware that his son had received legal representation because the son lives with the mother. She and the petitioner have been divorced since September 2009. He lists an annual income of $47,827.20, total assets of $73,426, and liabilities of $7,842. The petitioner is requesting that his name be removed from the joint lien with payment of $437.20, 50 percent of the lien amount, leaving the remainder of the lien in the name of the ex-spouse.
Questions for Melinda on this DPO? Is the petitioner here on this DPO? Did you want to have any comments?
Just as she stated, I want to take care of my 50 percent. I've already spoke with my ex-spouse about it. She's going to address her remaining at a later time.
Okay.
At her own pleasure.
Thank you.
Take care of my enforcement today.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept this compromise.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Next we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, please identify yourself. You get five minutes. And I'm just watching the clock.
Good morning. I'm Dwayne Walliver. I'm the president, the AFL-CIO of South Dakota. I just wanted to come before you today to remind you that money spent locally helps all our local jobs, all our local businesses. I was just told earlier this week that one of the contracts on your new jail was awarded to a company from Utah. We were very disappointed about that. We look at, Henry Carlson has been a main player in this city for years and years and years. They've got a great rapport with all the local contractors. I cannot see why, there's any reason to go outside our city. I really would appreciate you guys to all sit down and take a hard look at how much money is generated against how much money leaves the city and never comes back. That's the key to these major projects that you guys need. Everyone in the city needs so many, excuse me, so many buildings and major outlays of capital is all our tax dollars and that's the people that I represent. And my phone's ringing, so I don't know. That's why I'm here. There's no doubt about it that it rang more this last three days than it has since the legislature was done. So I just wanted to have you guys be aware of what was going on. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Dwayne. Is there anyone else that has anything for public comment? Okay. Move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider special events malt liquor license for the Thompson, oh, Schrot, American Legion Post, I apologize, 307. Olivia.
Yes. I don't know how to pronounce that either. But yes, this is a special event malt beverage license application for Post 307. A South Dakota state amateur adult tournament will be taking place at the Renner baseball field and as a fundraising event, Post 307 would like to sell malt beverage under their current license.
And this is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this malt beverage license? Anybody who wants to speak in opposition to this? Not seeing anybody. Okay.
I'm sure I have a question. How long can you get that kind of a temporary license for? This looks like it's three days maybe, or two days anyway.
Right. Fifteen consecutive days is what we allow.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's no comments, so I look for action on the commission side. Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as east 245 feet, south 210 feet, southeast one quarter, southeast one quarter exception, H1, H2, and H3, 10, 104, 50, Burke Township, a nuisance, a public nuisance enacted South Dakota codified law 21-10-6 deferred from July 17. Kevin.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item was heard before you on July 17 last week. At that time, the landowner stated that he had worked on the property a lot on the previous day, the Monday before, so it was deferred to today's meeting. Staff did visit the site on July 18, it was the day after the meeting, and took many pictures. Some of the items were removed indeed. Many of the junk items primarily was removed, but staff did notice that there was a number of unlicensed and/or expired licensed vehicles on the property. I'll go through some pictures in a moment. Unlicensed and expired vehicles are still part of the Minnehaw County Public Nuisance Ordinance. They are considered under abandoned property section of the ordinance. The South Dakota codified law number 21106 allows Minnehaw County to declare a public nuisance and allows the county to clean up the property and defray the cost to the property owner. So I'll just show you a few pictures. Here's the site. It's located approximately a mile and a half west of the Del Rapids exit, intersection of two county highways there. An aerial view of the site. So this was some, a couple of photos, the first couple are the original pictures that I've taken a year ago, or a little over a year ago. So you can see the changes. And then this is the pictures that I took on Wednesday. You'll see the fence in the background, and then there's the line of vehicles over here on the east side of the property. This picture here is where you'll see that a lot of the junk items was standing right where that tractor was and in front of the garage. And I didn't see any visible junk items, so there wasn't any longer, any barrels or tractor parts or car parts or anything like that. But you can also see, say, like that gray pickup in the background that's missing a tire. There are also unlicensed vehicles in this picture as well. And you'll see that these vehicles here do not have license plates in the front. I was not able to take a look at the back to see if the backs had plates, but from what I can tell, they are unlicensed. And here are some vehicles. One is an expired tag on the red Ford, as well as, you can't see in this picture, but that black vehicle in the back is also expired tag. So that was the, how the property is today, or at least it was on Wednesday when I took the pictures. And given that there is still nuisance violations on the property, the planning and zoning department still requests that Minnehaw County Commission declare the property a public nuisance. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Kevin. First you.
Just for the record, Kevin, what's this property zoned as?
The property is zoned A1 agriculture.
Okay, so what kind of business can be run on? Can you run a salvage yard, a scrap yard, auto dismantling? Can you do auto vehicle service and repair? What can you do there?
No, the, like, businesses like auto repairs and scrap yards are required to be in either commercial or industrial zoning districts. There are some uses that you can do as a home occupation, but they are specifically exclude auto-related things like that.
So if you wanted to have an accountant?
Yep.
Or bookkeeping business, something like that, but vehicle auto service and repair wouldn't be allowed?
Correct.
Under this zoning? Okay.
I'm going to dovetail off of that because that was my question is, so this is on a corner of two highway intersections, so why would we not change it to commercial or industrial?
I haven't discussed that with the petitioner, and we could. The one thing that could possibly happen with that is we'd have to configure it, there is a house on the property, and dwellings are not allowed to be in commercial and industrial zoning districts. So if we were to rezone it, the dwelling would become a non-conforming use. So I suppose we can rezone portions of the property to allow businesses, but once the business is there, he can continue his business there, but it does not allow junk on the property to accumulate at the same time. So he would still have to keep things cleaned up, I guess, is what I'm saying.
I'm sure.
Commissioner Burr.
So Kevin, in a non-conforming use, that would just mean that you couldn't replace the house if it burned down or something, right?
Correct.
But it still could be a house until that eventuality, right?
Correct.
So I think we had a similar thing with 10 acres with a barn on it, and if that barn had, would go burn or whatever, it would not be able to be replaced because there was no eligibility there. And that's just going from memory. Have you been in touch with the property owner there? I see him here. Have you guys chatted at all about what needs to happen?
I was there, I inspected the property on Wednesday. I guess I didn't really necessarily review it with him while I was on the property until I got back and looked at the photos that I took.
So I don't know if you know the answer to this, otherwise I'll ask the petitioner next. How many acres is there? So if we ended up, if he decided to apply for a commercial or an industrial and the house is not conforming, is there enough property that the building eligibility, if his house burned down, could be right outside the perimeter of that? I don't know how many acres. I mean, if he's got 30 acres, you could just have that building eligibility still connected, but just not to that corner. So if the house burned down, he could still build his house, just not in the exact location.
Sure. Well, the petitioner just said it's two-point date and I guess I would, I don't have any reason why that wouldn't be it.
Two-point eight.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at it, so I don't know if it's in my head. The other thing too is, as a non-conforming use, there are ways to go through like a conditional use permit, public hearing process to rebuild a non-conforming use if that was to happen in the likely, or unlikely happening of the house burning down. We could go through the conditional use permit process to allow it back up again.
Okay. Additional questions for Kevin? Would unlicensed vehicles be allowed in an industrial, commercial spot?
Yeah, I think there are places that do have unlicensed vehicles and are, yeah, you can, that is part of the conditional use permit as of zoning. Lots of repair places will have unlicensed vehicles. They would have them usually behind a fence or in a closed, not in a closed area, but...
Gated area.
Yeah, gated area that would be out of the public view.
Additional questions? This is a public hearing, so is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this?
I'm not, dude. My name is John Cunningham. I'm not in favor or opposed. I just have a question. It sounds like the, from the testimony, that the place is being declared a nuisance because of the unlicensed vehicles, apparently the trash has been collected, but that unlicensed vehicles are allowed to other places. It sounds to me more like there's a zoning violation or some other legal issue, and we're kind of going at it through a back door, trying to, the nuisance thing rather than addressing the actual, the actual problem. Just from hearing the conversation, it seems like it's more of a zoning violation than nuisance. It's probably a nuisance also, but since other people have unlicensed vehicles, doesn't seem to be an illegal issue, but does seem like it's more of a zoning issue than a nuisance issue. Thank you.
It actually is a nuisance issue, and we're just looking for another way to try to make this not be a nuisance in the future. Mr. Cunningham, we need your address. I apologize. Mr. Cunningham?
Your address, John.
We need your address for the record.
3904 South Oxbow, apartment 312 in Sioux Falls.
Anyone else like to comment for or against the property?
I already said what I had to say last week, so.
Well, if I might, I'd like the property owner to come up because I'd like to ask him a couple of questions. I'm hesitant to say it's great to see you again, but I'm glad that you're here. You can see what the issues are from the point of view of the planning and zoning, and you have made some progress on it.
Yeah.
Do you think that there's more that you could do?
There is more, and I am going to do more, yes. Yep. I've already spent $1,700 on licenses this year on vehicles. I do have a few more to license yet, but...
Well, you get to sell them too, right?
Well, I kind of do, but it seems like I like them, so.
Well, let me say, in this job, we had a place that had many, many vehicles in the woods behind the farmhouse, and the owner said that it was his retirement plan, that these were all collectible.
That could be something too, you know?
Well, he had eight-inch tree trunks growing up through the engine compartment, and at some point, that's, you know...
That's not the case here.
It's not collectible at that point. But I would really like you to bring this, we're making progress. If we don't do something now, we can't let you backslide, so...
Yeah.
Commissioners, I would favor deferring action again for a period of time and asking that there be continued progress, working with our planning and zoning folks. And I'll wait for discussion, but I have a date in mind.
I have another question. Commissioner Karski.
Yes, sir. Is it Ron?
Yeah, Ron.
Yeah, okay. 12, 13, unlicensed or expired licensed vehicles, are these all registered in your name?
Yes, pretty much.
So you do have title?
Not all of them. Couple of them are my dad's.
Okay. Family or at least...
Yeah, in fact, the ones that are right on the corner there, they're actually for sale, and the three of them are my dad's.
Okay. Do you have a South Dakota license to sell vehicles?
No, I don't. I don't sell that many of them myself. That's why there's so many of them too, but...
Because I think if you have more than...
I sell maybe one or two a year, and that's probably about it, maybe three, I don't know.
Okay. At five, you have to be licensed to do that. I can't remember for sure.
Yeah, the one red one there, I went to get license on it here two, three weeks ago, and I ended up putting another truck in my name, and they ended up mailing me two titles. And I didn't get the license, they didn't give me the tags for the red truck. So I got to get that straightened out, yeah, but I got two titles for one vehicle. I don't know how they messed up the paperwork, but they did.
Okay.
I have another question.
That's the first time it's ever happened to me, but...
Yeah. Commissioner Burr.
So, Ron, what are we doing with liquids and stuff? There, I noticed that green barrel in the...
The oil, that's just a garbage can there, but I got a waste oil burner in my shop that I burn waste oil.
Okay.
So, and it's in a secondary containment and stuff, so...
Are all the cars out of the right of way? I mean, I can't tell for sure by looking at pictures.
You know, we were talking about the view, blocking the view last, what, week ago when we were here? Lot of these pictures he's showing here aren't up to date either, like that white van there, that's pushed way back into the yard. It's not blocking the view at all. The vehicles there in the front aren't blocking the view any either, as far as coming up to the stop sign. I guess, yeah.
I would still be concerned if they were out of the right of way, and I don't know that.
No, they're inside the 50-foot, yep.
Okay.
Yep, they are. Because it's 50 foot from the center of the road, then it's 50 foot to any existing buildings, and it's, they're inside the 50-foot fence mark.
Madam Chair, not to Gerald?
Go ahead.
I just don't want to belabor it, but I remember this previous issue with the trees growing through the vehicles. Many of the vehicles belong to the property owner's father and some to his brother, but his father had passed away without a will, and so nobody knew who owned any of it, and we did wind up crushing a bunch of stuff out there.
Yeah.
And...
Well, you know, the corner, we've, my grandpa owned this place since 1943, and it's always been kind of a place where people have brought their cars that they didn't need anymore, and we dismantled them, saved parts, junked them out, whatever, you know? It's been like that since 1943. And people, sometimes people drop off cars. I don't even know who dropped them off.
Did you miss one if it was gone?
I might not miss one if it was gone either.
Don't suspect it is me, okay? It wasn't me.
Commissioner Bennigan, did you have a comment?
But I agree a 100 percent. It does, I do need to put a little bit more effort into keeping it cleaner. I agree with that 100 percent. I'm not arguing that point, but...
Commissioner Burr.
Well, we do appreciate the fact she moved the vehicles back away so there is no view issue, and I would...
You know, it's, not to interrupt you, but it's a, people run that stop sign like you wouldn't believe, and actually blocking that view kind of maybe even helps that somewhat. But there's, they look up the road, you know, coming from eastern, you know, when they're coming up on the stop sign, they'll look up the road and they'll look up the road, and the person they're not going to see is like my wife leaving her driveway or something, you know, running that stop sign, but, so, I don't know.
Just to continue if I could, I guess I would be in favor of deferring it a little while if, in fact, we could get your word, because you did what you said you were going to do a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe not to the entire completion of what we were hoping for, but if you would salvage some of the vehicles or move them back behind a visual fence, and I know a fence not going to be cheap, maybe cheaper than licensing them, I don't know that.
It has been so far, but...
But if, in fact, you make some improvement before we get to the fall of the year, or whenever Commissioner Barth suggests...
Yeah.
I would give you some addition, excuse me, I would give you some additional time, but I don't think we can go on forever because we frankly have laws we have to live with, whether we like them or not, they're still black and white for us. And there's no emotion or family history there that we can depend on that's going to change that. I don't know what an ag change from, or to commercial industrial would cost, but I think those opportunities have to be researched.
It used to be commercial at one time, so...
But we do need to get this solved, and the only way we're going to get this solved is to have a plan in place and an action plan taken care of, so that's kind of where I'm at with this process.
Commissioner Karski.
I'm looking at this one, and quite frankly, this one is a difficult one for a couple of things. I mean, I respect your right as a property owner to have your own vehicles on your property. I get that. And you had me until you said, well, for years we've been dismantling vehicles and selling parts, you're running a commercial operation.
No, we build cars, you know, I build street rods and stuff like that, so that's pretty much the parts we save and stuff, but...
To me, and I think the comment's been made, this is probably more of a zoning issue than a public nuisance. I don't know, we don't know what's behind the fence that was put up. When you look at the South Dakota law and Declaration of Public Interest, and what is a nuisance and, you know, vehicles accumulating and the chance for insects and vermin, skunks, raccoons, whatever, other critters that...
I spray a lot.
Okay. I mean, it's just, a salvage yard is not meant to be in a residential area, and...
This is rural.
They're your vehicles, I get that and I respect that, but if you're running a business, we need to take care of this the right way.
Yeah.
I'm okay with deferring it for a short period of time, but we really need to look at a long-term solution for what's going on here.
Commissioner Barth, what did you have in mind?
Well, you know, I think there's a good comment from Gerald about winter coming, and once we got, you know, 20 inches of snow on all of this, it would be really tough to clean up. So I was initially thinking about a month to August 21st, but I'm willing to listen to you wise folk who sit up here with me as to what might be a good day. You know, we need you to work with our department and...
I thought we were working together, actually, until we got this notice.
Keep it up, and I know we can solve this without big trouble. I appreciate you coming to the meetings to discuss this, and I don't know, Mr. Bennigan, do you have a date?
I'd give you till Labor Day.
Yeah.
And if it isn't solved or in process, then I probably would...
I'll keep in touch with him.
Well, we need you to, more than keep in touch.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right.
We need to have activity.
I'd like to turn my fence back down a little bit though and get some of the stuff out of there, but...
We, we don't have much choice after a while.
All right, yeah, I follow you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, that would be Tuesday, September 4.
Okay.
And I would make that a motion to bring this issue back on the 4th of September with hopeful resolution at that point.
I have a motion, is it your second? Commissioner, did you second? I'll second it. I have a second. Additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron, for coming. We'll see you in a month and a half.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item number 12 is a presentation on Pheasantland Industries Shops and Services. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Ballack, and I am the Director of Pheasantland Industries. If it's allowed, I would like to give you some resources.
Yep. Actually, Craig can probably help you, and that'll save you running around. Yep. Actually, Craig can probably help you, and that'll save you running around.
This into a jacket, uh.
My purpose today is threefold. I would like to inform you on what Pheasant Land Industries is, invite you to come see our facilities, and also provide solutions to some of, uh, your budget issues. So Pheasant Land Industries is a division of the Department of Corrections. Um, we're doing a lot of great things there, but to give you kind of a simplified idea, our goal is to provide products and services to South Dakota governmental entities, federal agencies, nonprofit organizations, and state employees. And when we are doing that, we're also providing work opportunities for our inmates, preparing them for a successful return to their communities. Uh, we do provide a pretty vast selection of products, but also do that at a pretty great savings, and that's where we can tie that into helping out with budgets. To highlight some of the things that we are doing, um, we have a print shop. They have an array of different materials from business cards to brochures. I know we're doing some, some envelope projects, letterheads. We also have a design team, so if there's something that you are specifically looking for, we are able to, uh, help generate some ideas as well. Next, we'll move on to our book bindery. Um, for potentially the commission, we could bind your meeting minutes. Any county records that you have, we can bind those as well. Um, historical books might be something of interest to you. In our carpentry shop, we, um, have the ability to custom make furniture, cabinetry, really any item made out of wood that you may need for an office, or even a large desk such as this that you're sitting at. We also do a lot of refinishing. The photo that you see there is a warden's desk that was found in a basement that had been there for over a hundred years, and the bottom picture is that item after it's been restored by our workers. We also have the upholstery shop that kind of works hand-in-hand with carpentry, you know, upholstering and reupholstering items. The chairs that are sitting here today, we can reupholster those into any fabric that you choose, whether it's vinyl, leather, or otherwise. Um, we also do a number of different office furniture type things, um, that would be appropriate for offices as well as other institutions throughout the county. Uh, we also provide some soft goods in that we make towels and do foam mattresses for places like the new jail, um, as well as the pillows. We also have a braille and license plate shop, not that those are probably necessarily relevant to your business here, but, um, it is something that we offer. Uh, our sign shop produces signs and decals for schools, cities, counties, state and nonprofits, and our design team can help with those decals, but we also do graphics for vehicles. Um, we can make banners, any aluminum sign that you may need for the parking lot and so on. And our garment shop is not located here in town. That's actually down at the Mike Durfee State Prison, but it can be anything from, um, an office polo to jerseys or other team items. The possibilities are virtually endless there again. We also have a laser engraving machine that gives us several capabilities. Um, we can provide awards, plaques, the water bottles, coasters. We can engrave on, um, flash drives, if you need something identified, really any, any type of engrave, engraveable item, we would be able to help with that. Our machine shop also does, uh, flammable cabinets, bunk beds, locker boxes, anything metal. I would share with you that we are starting a, a window project at the prison here shortly, and, um, we were able to come up with a screen for this project that they had budgeted four hundred and ninety-five dollars for. We were able to come up with an aluminum option that was slightly modified for forty-eight dollars. So there can be a very significant cost savings, um, and I guess I would really like you all to consider us for your future needs, and would also like to invite you to come to the prison and tour with us. Uh, I, I think there's a lot of things that are kind of a secret to most South Dakotans as, um, the, the industries that are producing many quality goods and services that really can stretch a budget and save money. So if you are at all interested, um, I have provided some, some information on each of the shops, a little bit of pricing, and then contact information for, um, any sort of tour that you would like to set up.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any questions for Stephanie? Commissioner Bennigan?
I, I will just say that, uh, I didn't know you did all these things, to be honest, and I've been through your shop, but that was a long time ago. Frankly, when I had hair. It was a long time ago. But more importantly, um, we had your Pheasant Land Group do some conference table work that came in in pieces as a donation from a donor, and your people put it together, and we get compliments on it all the time, and it, you couldn't lift it if you had four people to lift it, but the fortunate thing was, not only was it really nice when you got done with it, but the cost was minimal compared to what we had before. And, uh, all I can say is you guys do quality work. Sometimes takes you a little longer for some reason, but that's okay. I understand that. But for the price that we paid, uh, we couldn't be any happier.
I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
Yep.
I've also done a tour out there, uh, probably within the last year and a half. It might have been last summer. It's very, I want to say it's fascinating, because I was just kind of blown away by what they do and the quality of their work, and, we had to see a lot of examples of the braille that they do, which is really, really impressive. I've never seen that before. They took us through each section. The warden actually took us through, and it was, it was, it is really something, and I, I told the warden, put it on the calendar to come back again. I think this is something everybody should know that's available for nonprofits, and there are a few things that are, are available for the general public, like the upholstery shop, and I'm not sure what else, but a couple, maybe the refinishing.
The book bindery.
And the book bindery. They do great work, and the other thing is, is, the flip side of it is, is that we are training inmates that will someday get out with a trade that they can hopefully use in their life outside of, of jail, and so it's super important, and we have our sheriff here, but I think we use quite a few things in our jail, too, that come out of the state penitentiary.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barf?
I, I concur with, uh, Commissioner Bennigan. I, I guess I'd only seen the tip of the iceberg on, on this over my years of, of doing this, and I do have a question. Uh, how, how would, uh, an organization go about contacting you or an individual, say, that wanted to bind, uh, a, a book of some kind? Uh, how do they do that?
I actually left my card in your information there, so-
Okay, that's, I got it in there. I saw it.
You can just reach out to our office directly, and we will get you in contact with the book bindery or whatever shop would be most appropriate.
Great, thank you.
If there was somebody in the general public, is it listed in the phone book under Pheasant Industries or not? I'm looking at the warden, but I don't think he's even sure either. Maybe Google. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, good morning, Darren Young, Warden of the Penn and Director of Prison Operations for the State. It's been a while since I looked in the phone book. I don't know. So, uh, uh, but, uh, I'm quite certain if you Google, uh, the State website or Google us, we're there. And we, uh, we certainly would like to help, you know, if we can, so.
Okay, great, wonderful. Any other questions? Warden, nice to see you, too.
If I may add, just any more comments, so, um, seventy-degree job presentation, it, it's really, you need an idea. If it's, if it's made of wood, metal, um, cloth, paper, those kinds of things, I think, um, I've been in the business to know, sometimes you just need three quotes. Sometimes you need a, and, and we'd love to do those kinds of things, too, keep things competitive. Um, I'm a taxpayer in, in this, in this city, in this county, in this state, and I want my dollars to stretch as well. And, and you hit on it as well, we talked about the training. We know there's employment issues in our, in our cities, in our, our counties, in our states as well, and we need to get people, keep those jobs going. We can be, we can supplement those things and, and still have plenty of work for everybody, and not take away business from anybody else either, so. I think it's a great feature for a lot of reasons. I think it's a great program, um, and so for everybody involved. So I appreciate that. I mean, would, again, invite you to, to come out to see us.
Commissioner Bender?
I just would, just for the viewing public, you, if you Google Pheasant Land Industries, it comes up right away with the phone number and, and a way to get ahold of Stephanie, so. Hope people will take advantage of that.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Auditor Litz?
Good morning, Commissioner Bob Litz, uh, from the Auditor's Office. I'd like to add to the pitch, too, because, uh, uh, we've had occasion to do, uh, business with Pheasant Land Industries three times, and we've been very happy. One of them was my election center sign out there. That was about half price from what somebody else wanted to make it. It's very durable. It's weathering well. Uh, the other thing was, we had a, uh, a custom space downstairs that we needed a cabinet for, and we went out to one of the regular office suppliers, and we couldn't find one that worked, uh, and they built a custom one. It looks great. It, it, it works great, and it was about half price there, too. And then the other big thing was, was our, our voting booths are falling apart. They're, they're getting old, and if you lift one corner up to put a leg in, the other legs fall out, and they're, they're quite frustrating, so, uh, what we did was, uh, looked at buying new ones, and they were three hundred and forty dollars a piece for a voting booth. Uh, so we had the, uh, uh, worked with, uh, Pheasant Land, and we came up with a six-station tabletop plywood voting booth, and it was forty-eight dollars a piece. So we got six voting stations, forty-eight dollars a piece instead of nineteen hundred dollars. They've been great to work with. It's high-quality items, and, uh, just want to recommend them, so.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Cunningham?
John Cunningham again. Uh, the county has a very expensive project coming up. The, the, the jail is, uh, Pheasant Land Industries going to provide the, um, various materials. Looks like they've got a lot of things that could be used in the jail. Has that been considered?
I'm sure it has. We, they actually just did a project for us in our current jail, so I'm sure that that has been considered, and, um, I think they do our mattresses. Sheriff, would you mind just speaking just a second, or we got the warden, somebody that would say just a word about what we've done in the past, I guess. We can't hardly speak forward, but we can speak about what's in the past.
Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. Um, we deal with Pheasant Land Industries a lot at the jail. They provide a number of our mattresses, um, on occasion, our striped uniforms. They'll be consulted throughout the jail build process. If there's various components of that, they can help out with, but we, they're, they're a frequent supplier of our materials at the jail.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no other additional comments. We will move on in the agenda. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaw County and Lutheran Social Services for the diversion coordinator. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. In the memo that I sent to you, I talked about how, uh, diversion is the first step to try and prevent somebody, uh, a youth to get into the criminal justice system. Anything we can do to prevent that from happening is going to be a, a, a great win for everyone. Uh, once a youth gets into that juvenile justice system, it's hard for them to get out. Uh, we'd like to utilize diversion first, and it's required in many cases, but these are lower-level offenders that we're trying to prevent from going any further. It could be school issues. It could be home issues. It could be petty theft, something of that type of situation. Uh, we've come up with, uh, a plan to try and, uh, eliminate some of the time that it has been taking to get from step A to step B and, uh, get this successful process going. We now have this coordinator position in place that will be, uh, spearheading this situation. I'd ask that you approve this contract and, and move forward with that. I've asked, uh, Deputy State's Attorney Carol James to be present, so that she can answer any questions that go along with this project. She's been kind of the lead on that, so.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there any questions for Jamie or, um, Carol?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Carol, for running over. Item number fourteen is authorize the chairman to sign agreements between Minnehaw County and the Center for Family Pr- Family Medicine to provide, um, physician services to Human Services. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Phelps from Human Services. So I'm here to discuss today an agreement that we've had with Center for Family Medicine for decades now, um, for them, uh, to provide physicians to our office, and they usually come about once a week and on, on average, about an hour a week. It can be less or more than that, but that'd be the average. And they help us to determine eligibility and ensure that we're, um, conforming with current statutes relating to indigent, uh, medical relief. And, uh, the main thing that they, the main function that they provide is to review medical records of some of the clients and determine whether or not that the, the admits to the hospitals were emergent or life-threatening or that type of a thing. We also look at, you know, help to direction in terms of workability of clients and things like that to them. And we pay thirty-three hundred annually for that service, and we have been for many, many years. It hasn't gone up or down or anything. It's just that recently, we, we realized that we actually didn't have anything in writing in terms of a contract or an official contract or agreement on file at the auditor's office or at CFM or our office anywhere, so. Kind of caught us by surprise, so I put something together in terms of an agreement in writing. It's been approved by, uh, our office, the State's Attorney's Office, as well as Center for Family Medicine. And, um, as you see it there. So what we need today is we're asking for a, a motion to approve that we can continue this agreement with CFM. They can provide physician services to help us with determining eligibility with those admits and compliance with statutes, existing statutes, and that we pay thirty-three hundred annually for that, for that service, and that's ongoing. And, uh, and until at which point one or both parties would decide to, um, uh, change the agreement in some way. And then we'd have to get together and just, and agree on that and come forward again. But, um, I guess I would open it up for any questions that you'd have at this point.
Any questions for Jamie? Motion?
Move approval.
Make a motion to approve. Second?
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Item number fifteen is consider a motion to adopt the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen provisional budget for Minnehaw County. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is the twenty-nineteen, uh, is the, uh, twenty nineteen provisional budget. This is due in peer July thirtieth, not the last day of July. We've double-checked statutes on that, and July thirtieth is when this is due. The, uh, FY nineteen budget includes an additional staff person in the Treasures and Equalization Office, two attorneys within the State's Attorney's Office, and two attorneys within the Public Defender's Office. The budget also includes the addition of one post within the jail for the last quarter of the year, which represents six correctional officers. Key doublers on this budget. The total budget is eighty-six million, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That's an increase of two percent over last year's, if you include apples to apples. Twenty eighteen budget looked a little bit different when you passed it as provisional, because it included all of the jail dollars in there, the forty-some million dollars, so. I wanted to bring it down to apples to apples for you, so a two percent increase. The general fund cash applied, which you know, you spend a lot of time having that discussion on cash applied dollars, what amount that should be. You had a target of four point five million, and as of today, the provisional budget stands at four million, five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Taxes levied are budgeted at fifty-one million, three hundred and ninety thousand and five hundred and six dollars, and an additional thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars represents a variety of revenues and fees. Well, I'll just mention opt-out, because there was a lot of discussion this year about opt-out. In two thousand and fifteen, the commission approved a three-point-five-million-dollar opt-out, of which one point five million was accessed in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen. For two thousand and eighteen, this year, an additional one point four of this opt-out was left, which left six hundred thousand dollars, and you will be accessing that final six hundred thousand dollars. So I think it's important to note that as commission, um, you didn't take it all in one year. You stretched it over four budget years in order to make that, in order to make that work. Uh, the revenue growth, the CPI, which is determined by the state of South Dakota, it is three percent, or the CPI, whichever is less, was two point one percent, adds six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to our budget, and the growth is two point nine four percent, which adds nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The next time you will talk about budget will be September fourth. According to state law, you are to have a budget hearing the first Tuesday in September, and, uh, that will happen on September fourteenth at nine fifteen a.m. during the commission meeting. You do have the option to hold additional budget hearings during that time, if you would like to, with the final budget being adopted September twenty-fifth. And just as a reminder, during September, you do have the State Association- you do have the State Association meeting, so you have three meetings during the month of September. I know I'm the taskmaster of the calendars during this process. Any questions you may have?
Any questions for Carol? This is not a public hearing. This is just a passing of the provisional budget. So I would consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Kersky.
I just want to point out that while there were 27 additional positions requested through a long and somewhat painful process, we only are approving six new positions. So, you know, we do spend a lot of time, especially in that one area. So when we look at 27 requested, it was whittled down considerably to only six, a growth of six full-time equivalent in the county. So people are aware of that.
Any additional comments? I have a motion and a second to pass the provisional budget. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is consider a motion to approve the 12 proposed resolutions for submission to the South Dakota Association of the County Commissioners for Legislative Action. Craig Dewey, good morning, Craig.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Last year in 2017, Manyaha County partnered with multiple municipalities in the area, including the city of Sioux Falls, as well as Dell Rapids and Garrettson Crooks Hartford. This year, I believe Harrisburg joined the group as well, to really focus on what is a commonality amongst the different governmental units for priorities for the legislature. Going to peer and speaking with one voice acts as a force multiplier and amplifies the impact that that can have on the legislative process. So that was successful last year and has continued again this year. The group met a couple of different times, and Chairwoman Heiburger was present at those meetings as well as I was. And so we're going to go through 12 different resolutions and explain the impact that they would make. And there are a number of these resolutions that were passed last year by the County Commission. Some of them were added to the South Dakota Association of Counties Legislative Priorities list. But in terms of speaking with one voice, that's why these resolutions are being brought forward here, even if some of them are already as part of the legislative priorities for the State Association.
Craig, I'm going to interrupt for two seconds, and that is, we will have to have a roll call vote after each item. And I'm wondering, do you, would it be all right if when he does item A that we discuss it and have a roll call vote? Or do you want to go to have him, have him do all of them, and then go back and do a roll call vote on each particular resolution?
I'd rather do the roll call vote as we go through them.
Okay. That's what we're going to do. So if we'll address item number A, and then we will do a roll call vote on it.
All right. The first item on this list is alternative publication options for local government. As you are aware, all open meetings are required to have publications, minutes published in different official newspapers. And that does incur significant cost over time, because some examples, including on top of minutes, rather, are processes for bids or RFPs, name changes, other adoptions, meeting announcements, and other official notices. So that dollar amount does add up to a significant dollar amount over time. Plus, you have the State's Attorney, who has to publish notices for trials. And so Manyaha County spends over $100,000 a year on publishing those minutes in the local papers. So allowing for alternative publication options, say a government website, where you could have multiple governmental units, post-meeting information, so it would essentially be a one-stop shop on the internet for the public to be able to be apprised of what's going on in their government. So that is the first resolution. Would be happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions on that one? Okay, I would leave a motion and a second on this, and then a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote, Olivia.
Baris?
No.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. All right.
The second resolution on the agenda is eliminating double taxation on public building projects. With the jail expansion beginning to break ground here later in August, as you were well aware, in passing the bond, that was a significant expense for the county that will be spread out over time. In process of looking at that, it was discovered that counties and municipalities are required by state law to pay sales tax on the building, as well as pay contractors excise tax. And that essentially amounts to double taxation, since government revenue for the county comes from taxpayers, and then the county is turning around and sending another check to the state. And one thing that the county views as unfair in that process, as well as municipalities, is paying sales tax is a one-time event. We're having to, the county is having to bond to pay for the jail. So we're essentially amortizing the expense of sales tax over the whole life of the bond, which again, doesn't make sense from a public policy standpoint to tax the taxpayers a second time to pay for those costs.
And I would point out that I believe it's close to a million dollars.
Correct. $900,000.
$900,000 taxes on a building that we had to pass a levy for. So yes, which would be a whole lot better to put back into the jail instead of taxing it. Commissioner Bender.
I'm curious if the state government is required to pay these taxes when they build buildings, similar buildings.
State government is exempt from paying sales tax on their own building projects.
Excuse me. Cool figure.
I would look for a motion and a second on this, eliminating double taxation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Comment by Commissioner Benega.
I don't even know how to say this politely. We have to pay taxes. The state does not have to pay taxes. And when we pay the taxes from the city and the county for our construction, it goes to the state, which we don't get any of the revenue for. Those are wonderful rules.
Yeah. And the municipal league and this, I believe this included schools also. Were schools also taxed? Can you, do you know that one for sure?
I believe there are a number of exemptions for schools, and so they may have some exemptions in this category.
I won't go with the schools. But the city also, municipalities are also double taxed. So that was why we joined together on this one. So I have a motion and a second. We'll need a roll call vote.
Baris?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is ash bor mitigation. Emerald ash bor.
Yes. I had never heard of the Emerald Ash Bor before it was brought up here in the local media over the course of the last six months or so. But as it has spread throughout the city, different mitigation measures have taken place for treating trees to prevent further spread. And as we know, with other pests, like the pine beetle, that had a tremendous impact on western South Dakota. Certainly municipalities have a number of ash trees in their areas. But if you look out in the rural areas of the county, different farmsteads certainly have windbreaks set up, and ash trees are, comprise a number of different windbreaks. And so the windbreaks help prevent erosion. And with the South Dakota's property tax system with ag property being valued at productivity, if you have significant erosion, that will lower property values. In turn, that would reduce the taxable amounts that the county could collect for each of those properties. So this resolution is calling upon the state to provide funding to help mitigate further spread of the Emerald Ash Bor.
And also mitigation, but also as these trees start to die, there's going to be, have to be removal. And the removal and disposal of a whole lot of trees is not cheap either. And so that was the conversation that we had. So any comments on that? Commissioner Karski?
I really don't see this as a county issue. You know, the pine beetle, I don't think was stopped by, you know, Meade County or Custer County. I think, you know, they got federal assistance in that. And I suspect that the reason that, that this infestation is happening is because of climate change. And unless we do something about that, spraying some poison isn't going to solve it. And so I oppose this one.
I would, I would just point out that we're doing this with the municipal league, and this is a huge issue for the city, and the city is supporting, the city is supporting some of the ones that they would not normally support. And that's part of our reason, too. But I, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Additional comments? Look for a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A second. Okay. A motion and a second. And we would need a roll call vote.
Baris?
No.
Bender?
No.
Benega?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passed, fails three to two. Next, we have state funding for Human Services Agency Transportation.
This was another issue that was important particularly to the city of Sioux Falls. When we talk about Human Service Agency Transportation, we're talking about transportation for individuals to organizations like LifeScape, as opposed to the Human Services Center down in Yankton. So the state only funds a portion of that transport for individuals to receive services at LifeScape, and that doesn't cover the full cost of the public transport that the city is expending on that. So this resolution would call for the state to provide full funding for that Human Service Agency Transportation.
Questions for Craig on this one. Craig, do you know if our human services does any reimbursement for transportation?
I can check into that. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
They just walked out.
Yeah, I know they do bus passes, but it's not, I don't think that's directly on point to your question.
Okay. Yeah, so I don't know if they, I'm assuming they do, but I don't know.
I believe transport to LifeScape is primarily a city function as opposed to a county function, if that answers part of the question you were asking.
Okay. Comments?
I'd make a motion in favor.
A motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Dice for a lack of a second. Okay. Move on to item E, which is the highway wheel tax.
The highway facilities with Manyaha County are aging, and I know there are a number of priorities throughout the county. Certainly, the jail expansion will require further funding to operate it once the construction is done. There have been some different options discussed for a funding mechanism for a new highway facility. And one option that was discussed was a local option. I guess I do want to make a clarifying remark, that this specific resolution here is not going to be one that was decided by all the municipality groups together. This would, this resolution specifically would just be from Manyaha County and be forwarded to the State Association, just to clarify any confusion that might exist. So with this resolution, it would allow local county commissions to appropriate up to 25% of wheel tax revenues to fund new construction or financing of highway facilities. And in terms of looking at future financial obligations that the county has, this was one way for the county to be able to solve its own problems without going to the legislature to ask for additional monies. And again, this would boil down to local control for the decision-making process. And that's something that I know the Highway Department has discussed, as well as Commissioner Karski, who is the liaison to the Highway Department. I'd welcome, Commissioner Karski, any additional comments or thoughts that you have regarding this language.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Craig. And this, going back to the question, does the state tax themselves? No, they don't. But at the same time, they do allow themselves to use highway funds for their own facilities, but they say counties can't. And the wheel tax is strictly a local revenue source. So it would be up to each county. It'd be permissive legislation that allows counties to make that decision on a local level, and it goes back to local control. So, thank you.
And then one additional piece of information, and this is not included in the current language, but I know you had brought up the idea yesterday in an email about possibly modifying the language for maintenance and/or upkeep.
Yeah. Not just construction of new, but maintenance of facilities. I mean, putting a new roof on a structure can add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars, or, you know, whatever it may be. So to allow for the maintenance, as well as construction of a facility. So, yes.
So you would like to see that added in an amended motion?
I would like to see that added into here, yes. And I've talked, and I've edited this through our Highway Superintendent, and I've talked to the South Dakota Association exec, and they saw where this would help other counties with similar problems to ours. Not every county has a wheel tax. And I do know from talking to legislators that they're probably, on past issues, that they would like to see counties have more local control and to institute a wheel tax. So I think we could probably see that used to our advantage with this resolution.
Commissioner Baris?
You know, Dean, you bring up a good point there about the state, because I know that they also use highway money to pay for the highway patrol. And the idea that, you know, we could use some of that for our patrols, that we could use some of that for ambulance services, which patrol the highways, et cetera, has occurred to me in the past. And I strongly support this resolution.
I'm wondering if we'll need an amendment to change the resolution, and then a vote, a roll call vote to adopt this. So I would take a motion to amend with what you want the amendment to be.
I would just like, you know, where it says, "Current state allows, does not allow wheel tax revenue to be used for new facilities." Okay, let's go this way. After that, for financing of new highway facility construction, or for maintenance of, maintenance and repairs of Highway Department facilities.
Okay. I have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I would look for a motion and a second to...
Move to approve.
Have a motion.
Second. But I'd like to make a comment about the amendment.
Okay.
I think we should have said capitalized maintenance. Otherwise, you would just be using general operating cost, if you will, to maintain facilities. And I'm not sure that's a good idea.
So remove the word maintenance, or are you?
I think we're talking about capital expenditures, not maintenance expenditures. Otherwise, you could literally be using that tax for fixing potholes in the parking lot, which is true.
I think the intention was for capital improvements to property, not, you know...
I understand that, but I didn't speak loud enough.
Right. So I mean, so I understand what you're saying. I think that is the intent of what we were thinking about.
If I may, Commissioner, I guess I see this resolution more as a work in progress to go to the State Association for that cleanup, if you will, on how the state would like to see it worded. And I, you know, just want to get this to them. And if they, those type of tweaks, I think would be best, you know, if we could, as a group of all counties, decide on how that should look. So I fully suspect that this will be changed at that point or at that level anyway. So it's mostly just to get it to them, so that the discussion can be had.
And I would agree with that. So I'll keep my comment to myself.
And Craig, I think that needs to go in the notes, then, to make sure that that comes up at the next meeting. Otherwise, I would suggest that you have an amendment to add.
No, I'm not going to amend it, because...
So then it just needs to go in the notes, the notes, when I bring it to the state. Okay?
Thank you.
So I have a motion. Let's see. Did I have a motion and a second? Yes, I did. So then a roll call vote on the wheel tax.
Baris?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Motion passes unanimously. Item number F is intergovernmental cooperation.
Taxpayers have the opportunity to save significant dollars when multiple governmental entities cooperate with each other. And certainly, given that Sioux Falls resides both in Manyaha County, as well as Lincoln County, and there are other municipalities, working collaboratively together can offer some new solutions that benefit all governmental units, which result in benefiting taxpayers as well. So this resolution is an example of another resolution that did pass last year, being sent to the counties. Would be happy to answer. Any questions you have on this one?
I'd make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Motion and a second. Additional comments? Roll call vote.
Baris?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
No.
Motion passes four to one. Item G is local option bed and booze tax.
The local option bed and booze tax idea really came out of discussions regarding potential increases to the alcohol tax that were discussed at the 2018 legislative session. Those alcohol tax increases did not pass, and in conversations with legislators, they suggested maybe a more palatable option for passage at the legislature would be a local option bed and booze tax on alcoholic beverages, as well as hotel rooms, as examples. And again, with it being a local option, that would be up, the authority to each county would be to enact that if they so chose. If the counties decided, specific counties decided not to do that, they wouldn't have to. So this law is permissive rather than mandatory. And we certainly can understand that alcohol is a major, alcohol consumption is a major driver of different county law enforcement expenditures, as well as other public safety costs and human services as well. So the counties believe that if the driver is going to be alcohol consumption, and when many people travel, alcohol is consumed as well, that you should really tie that revenue source to the expenditures that it is causing. And that... is causing. And that's what this local option would do. Would be happy to answer any questions regarding this one.
Item G, Commissioner Karski?
Totally embarrassed. I thought we were, my last vote was for this one, not for the last one.
I was desperate to ask you after the meeting why you voted no on that one, so.
I do, I was like, why?
So, if I could comment on this one, I was reading ahead, and I'll pay attention now. I apologize. Excuse my redness. And when it comes to, you know, the booze tax, I'm fully supportive of it, but I strongly suspect that it's not going to go anywhere without the support of at least the governor's office in taking a legislative study at what are, what is going to be generated by a booze tax, who is paying it, how is it being paid? Just came back from Nashville, and next year's national convention for National Association of Counties is in Vegas, and they were bragging that their bed and booze tax is thirteen, only 13%, one of the lowest in the nation. Well, they obviously could come here and pay a whole lot less, because ours is significantly less. If you travel, you know that our taxes, especially for these types of services, are extremely low. But, I'm kind of torn on this one, as you can tell, because I love the idea of a local option, but I really would be more supportive of a resolution that asks the governor to support a study that would take a look at what options there are for a booze tax, and how that money would be generated, and who would pay it, and how would it be distributed. So, just my two cents worth.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I have visited with a couple of legislators who suggested it should be brought back, and I think one of the things about last year's proposal was that I think the money was going to go for treatment, and maybe some felt that it should go to a different area, you know, enforcement or whatever. But, again, I think when they get their hands on it, they'll twist it and change it, and it'll come out, hopefully, with something positive for the county. So, I support this.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
I don't know that I disagree with Commissioner Karski, that, you know, this is something that comes up perennially, it gets shot down perennially, in that we do need to coalesce a group together that could reach some kind of understanding about costs, and how those costs are tied to alcohol consumption. And, I mean, if you watch the jail numbers like I do, I mean, they spike every time there's a big event in Sioux Falls. And those are costs directly to taxpayers in Minnehaha County. And so, I mean, I do think if there's some effort spent really digging into this issue, that it will become more and more apparent to folks looking at that data, the tie, and the fact that there should be some way of recouping that amount from folks that are here coming to town to enjoy an event. But, at the same time, I'm not sure that there's a better way to keep it in front of people than passing a resolution like this, so that the topic continues to be in the front of people, and, you know, hopefully reaches the level where there is some study done, or there is some more effort taken to look into this issue.
Additional comments?
I would say that we can't ignore the problem with doing business the same way we've done it in the past, because we're having double-digit growth in public safety-related issues with no income offset, and we've identified an area where those problems are causing it, and we need some help. And I think to provide that information to the legislature or to the governor, or both, is a good idea.
I also have had legislators approach me, and Jeff and I weren't in the same place, so I don't know if they're the same people or different people, but I have had legislators approach me and tell me, you need to continue hammering on this. So, I would look for a motion on this one?
I move approval-
Local bed and booze.
I move approval to local bed and booze, but I'm only going to have two.
I have a motion, second. Second, recall vote?
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the state radio funding.
Next up is upgrading to a reliable statewide emergency radio system known as Project 25, P-25 for short. The federal government is already utilizing some next-generation technology for emergency response processes. This is different from a cellular phone network, and these specific radios would be a government-only channel for these radios, and you have to all be on the same system to be able to communicate with one another. And so, if South Dakota and the counties do not upgrade to this system, if there was a disaster requiring emergency response, South Dakota and the counties would not be able to receive the radio transmissions from the government as far as coordinating that response. So, this is something that affects every county across the state. I know this is something that is very important to a number of counties and municipalities as well, as that emergency response is coordinated.
This is already a part of the platform of the SDACC, but we, the resolution was decided again on by the municipalities, municipal league and us, just because we felt it's important to continue to hammer on it, so.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I think, just like with the alcohol issue, the legislators are aware of this, the administration and peer is aware of this, certainly law enforcement and emergency, people are aware of this, and we need to keep it in front of them and ask them to address it. And so, I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Recall vote?
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have saving money by requiring one legal newspaper.
All right, we are two-thirds of the way through this list. Thank you for bearing with me. Saving money by requiring one official newspaper. Currently, South Dakota requires that counties that have more than one legal newspaper to publish notices in up to three official newspapers. Some counties or legislative districts don't have that issue, because there's only one newspaper in the county. We do have a number of newspapers, and so, this would allow counties and municipalities to save money by only publishing in one official newspaper.
Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I'm not a fan of this idea. I believe that supporting the small newspapers in our county has great benefit, and I think that I'm not ready to cut them out in favor of, you know, journalism is already under a lot of stress, and I don't think we get enough coverage. And so, what we can do to spread the word is important, and I'm not in favor of this one.
Additional comments? Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious if you can help me understand that, are we talking about the same kind of notices that we just voted on to, in that alternative publication options for local government, which seemed to me more of an internet-based solution? Is this kind of an alternative to that, or are we talking about different kinds of notices?
This would be an alternative to that one, as far as expanding the options that the county would have for publishing notices. The original alternative publications for local government would allow public, or the notices, rather, to be placed on the internet, and so you would not, in addition to publishing. So, you wouldn't necessarily have to continue publishing in the newspapers. This is just another option the group discussed, because this issue has run into opposition, as you can imagine, from the newspaper association at the legislature, so it's trying to be creative.
So, yeah, it was two different issues, sort of. I think we talked about the fact that there are quite a few counties in the state of South Dakota, and I don't have a number, that only have to pay one newspaper, where the bigger ones, because we have multiple newspapers, have to pay three. And so, hoping that, you know, if they would do something like this, that they would also do the internet access, so we would have more fairness. We pay the most, obviously, as Minnehaw County being the biggest county, we pay the most to the newspapers for publishing our notices, and if they had both of them, because if you're from, I don't know, Harding County, you probably have one. I don't know that for a fact, but you probably have one. So, that was, that was where this conversation came up best, is that we, as Minnehaw County and Lincoln County, are paying for a whole lot more publications than probably some of the other counties are.
And Madam Chair, if I could add an additional comment to, the approval of these resolutions doesn't necessarily authorize a specific bill with language to be brought forward to the legislature. Moving these resolutions to the state association would allow the state association to support any legislation of the type that would address the subject, should it come to the legislature. So, certainly, Minnehaha County, in any legislative item, if there's a bill that U.S. commissioners would like to see specifically brought forward, as happened during the 2018 legislative session, you would still have the authority to do that later. But this does not authorize, or will not result directly in a specific bill being brought forward, unless you so choose.
So, they would go to the association, and the association would decide if they want to put it as their platform, and there's a long conversation when you get there, if it even makes it to the next level as part of our platform. So, anyway, we're on saving money by requiring one legal newspaper. I need a motion, if there is one. Motion? Dies for a lack of a motion. Item J is substance abuse education.
The next resolution is dealing with funding for drug and alcohol education, intervention, and treatment programs. And really, as we know, there are a number of individuals with mental health, behavioral health challenges that enter our justice system, and funding different intervention and treatment and education programs could help divert some of those individuals to help that they actually need to deal with the issues that they're facing. And so, again, we can certainly appreciate, as human services, a number of the services that our human services department works with are impacted by substance abuse, and so funding for those programs could help see reductions in costs related to those areas.
Questions, comments, motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I would second with a comment.
Motion and second. Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, this is the type of thing I would like to see, where we have the other resolution tied to alcohol, related to alcohol, where if we could combine these types of things, I mean, it would make sense. We're going to try to create a new or increased revenue source that we have a place to put it, instead of just one, but our general fund. But to be able to use these funds for specific purposes would make a lot of sense. But, I'm supportive of this resolution.
Commissioner Barth?
Dean is so right on this, and, you know, I think we all would like this to happen, especially if we had a funding source. But, I'd hate to see it mandated that we spend our existing monies without any new revenue to do this, because, you know, I don't want it paid for out of our wallet unless we have some money coming in.
I think that they were hoping for state education substance abuse, because a lot of that has been cut in the past, and we've seen an increase in meth use and drug use as education has been defunded. So, I think they were looking for state funding. But, like Craig said, again, this is to send a resolution to the association in support of, and if they were going to do something, I would hope it'd be tied with another bill. So, maybe not. Let's see, do I have a motion on that one?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so recall vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item K is tax increment financing.
This is a resolution that did pass last year, and during the 2018 legislative session, the legislature opted to modify the tax increment financing process. I believe Deborah Owen, the registered lobbyist with the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, worked heavily on that, and the local chamber was supportive of those changes that were made to state law. But, again, in terms of raising awareness about this issue and the importance of maintaining local control in tax increment financing, that was the reason why the county, as well as the municipalities, agreed that this should stay on the list and be up for your consideration again here today.
So, looking for a motion and-
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Karski?
Should this be more of a policy statement than a resolution, I mean, for the South Dakota Association of Counties?
So, the resolutions that get approved today will be for discussion to add to the list of policy statements for the state association. So, in order for the state association to take automatic action without having to go through an executive board meeting, if something is added to their policy statements, then the state association could do so. So, this resolution, if it were passed, would be added to the state association policy statements list.
Policy, okay. Thank you.
And I believe this already is, but the other thing is, is if they lay dormant for a long time, and they're, I mean, we reviewed last year and took a lot of them off, because there was no support, and it just is going nowhere. So, it's always good to throw your support behind an issue again, because I'm pretty sure this is already in the association's policy statement. So, I have a motion and a second for tax increment financing. All those in favor, oh, excuse me, recall vote?
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. One left.
Maybe we should do the roll call vote in inverse alphabetical order.
You're always first. Workforce housing.
This is an example of another resolution that was discussed last year. Certainly, workforce housing is very important as the city and county continue to grow. And when we talk about workforce housing, we're talking about single-family dwellings, neighborhood revitalization, as well as homebuyer assistance for those who meet certain requirements. So, if we're going to be able to continue to grow as a community and support job growth, we need housing for people coming into our communities. And certainly, we need a sufficient level of housing, or rather, funding for workforce housing to also help prevent neighborhoods from falling into decline and disrepair and rehabilitate neighborhoods. So, the workforce housing resolution can also help combat some neighborhood blight, and that, in turn, can result in reduced crime rates that the city and the county is facing. And as we know, once someone gets arrested, no matter if it's Sioux Falls Police Department or the county sheriff, it then becomes the county's response to book them, responsibility, rather, to book them, to prosecute if a public defender is required and so forth. So, again, this is the expanding workforce housing opportunities resolution.
Questions, comments? Karski?
One point that was made at the National Association meetings, when we talked about, you know, the drug and alcohol problems and homelessness and that type of thing, you know, we can't, unless we have housing for people, no matter how many problems we try to solve, if that, that one item is not solved first, the rest of the problems just can't be truly addressed properly. So, I mean, housing is the most basic of needs, and if somebody has other, whether it be mental illness or chemical dependency issues, you can solve those issues, but without housing, it doesn't help to improve the problem, so.
Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
You know, Dean, you bring up a great point there, and that's, you know, where we wound up building the safe home, for example. But, you know, every day in our community, it seems like affordable housing is going away. You know, we have the Huey Apartments, which are full of low-income people. We kick them out to build some stuff for high rollers like me. Where do those people move to? I mean, and I, certainly, I'm not opposed to new development, but you look at, say, the hospitals that have demolished whole neighborhoods of hundred-year-old homes that elderly folks lived in, where do those people go to? We don't have enough affordable housing. And so, that's almost a thing that we could have as a discussion for a whole hour someday, but clearly workforce housing is a very important issue. We can't have people moving here, living in their cars while they build our new buildings.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Recall vote?
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Item number 17 is Minnehaw County liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth, first.
Last night, we had planning. It didn't go as late as we feared. We have a new planning commissioner, who was there for his first meeting, and was, it was a good meeting. Probably our most difficult issue was a bed and breakfast over in the Renberg area that some neighbors were opposed to, but we approved it, and anyway.
Commissioner?
It's really not a liaison report, but last evening, I had the, I'd say, a privilege of working with some other public servants in the city and the county and the state level at the banquet and serving people. It was an eye-opening experience, emotional experience for some of us. It's amazing how many children that they were serving last night. I had done this for breakfast before, but not seen that many children. Fortunately, Commissioner Bender's step-in last night was her husband.
I did notice that he has been well-trained in serving meals.
Took years and years.
Yep. The banquet's building a second location west of the interstate. And it's located in a donated land by the Dell Bridge family, which is awesome that they did that. But it's right in the middle of one of the highest areas of children who get free and reduced lunches. So it's in a perfect location. Fundraising is going extremely well from private donors, and they're close to their goal, so I would encourage people to consider that. Mayor Tenhaken also wasn't able to attend last night, but ironically, he was very supportive financially of the project. And I think we need to be well-aware of the growth of the need for the banquet issues. Some of those children, you have to ask about what's their future going to be like if we don't do some of the things that we need to do. So I hope that we all have a chance to do that again.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth, did you have any?
I would just say, our own Craig Dewey, I believe, was there last night.
He certainly was.
And are you an expert dishwasher, or?
I'm a milk server.
Milk server. I hope that we continue to do this. This, I've done it a few times, and it's, it always makes me feel like my own problems are miniscule. Minor, yep. Thank you.
Additional liaison reports? I have the SDACC board meeting. I believe it's August seventh. It's that first week of August on a Wednesday and Thursday to review the resolutions, just to make you aware. And then we'll have the convention coming up in September. And we will be missing a commission meeting at that time. Carol, I think, referenced that, to go to the state association meeting in September. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair, I should say I will not be here next week. And we'll be taking a vote on the jail project.
Okay.
And I'm encouraged by the input that I've had from people in the construction business on this. And I'm, I believe I'm ninety-nine point something percent supportive of going forward with whatever we come up with on the guaranteed maximum price. And, but I will be in Florida for my grandson's twelfth birthday.
Congratulations. Carol, did you have new business or old business? I'm sorry.
Calendar.
Oh, okay, so.
New business?
Pardon me?
New business?
Okay, new business.
Christmas is a long ways off. But Christmas is on a Tuesday, and when Christmas is on a Tuesday, we also have New Year's Eve on a Tuesday. So I need you guys to start thinking about what you want to do for meetings during that time. And probably be back in the next week or two, because I know the auditor's office needs to have schedules done, and we need to put stuff together. So think about that. And if you've already started making holiday plans, maybe shoot me a note or give me an idea of what you might be looking at so that we can, because we need to pay bills. And the first meeting of the year is always the organizing meeting of the year, and the last meeting is always important because we, if we need to do any carryover supplements or any supplements, or, and get the last bills paid.
So Caroline talked about it just briefly yesterday, and so if you just want to let her know, you know, what looks like it would work for you in that week of Christmas and New Year's, we can pick any day we want, but we'll have to, like she said, pay bills is really the big thing. And just, and so we'll try to make those meetings short, not plan any planning and zoning or public hearings, or, but just try to get through what absolutely needs to be done, those two meetings. So just put it on your radar to look at. Any old business? Look for a motion to recess. The Minnehaw County meeting for ten minutes, which would be, let's say, ten forty-five. So it's actually about eleven minutes. We'll reconvene for executive session, which is.
Recess.
A motion to recess for ten minutes.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. So, yeah.